I'd like to call the city council meeting to order and invite you all to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have roll call?
Cam Collier.
Here.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Collier.
Here.
I want to begin this evening's meeting by, what, the first thing, yeah, okay, we'll get to this in a minute. You all emailed a copy of the minutes from our August 21 meeting. I would look for a motion to either amend or approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Wiley and Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, I want to welcome back Commander Collier. You were missed. We missed your input and your wisdom that you bring to the table. Mr. Murray did a fantastic job, I think. He represented the 4th District well. He engaged himself in conversation and discussion. We'll miss him, but this past year, I think we all missed Councilman Collier. And we gave you a month after your return to get re-acclimated to family and job, and now you're back as of 1st of September, and I wholeheartedly welcome you back to the council.
Aye.
And in mentioning that, Cam, prior to leaving before, for his deployment, served on the Board of Public Works and Safety. And Craig sat in this past year as a Board of Works member. And in addition, so Craig served on two boards during that time. He also served on the Economic Development Corporation Board. I've talked with Cam, I've talked with Craig, and going forward, Phyllis will draft up the paperwork. We're going to continue to let, have Craig serve on the Board of Works and Safety, and Cam will be assigned to a board member on the Economic Development Corporation. So I think Cam will be a good fit for the EDC and look forward to working with him there. Now, on to the agenda. I believe the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for the 2019 budget. So I would look for a motion to suspend, is that the word? Suspend the council meeting and open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to suspend our council meeting and open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. So we're now in a public hearing. And what do we do, Tim? Is there just open it up to the public for any comments or discussion on our, on our proposed budget?
Proposed budget.
And/or if there's any comments from the council members or myself, now would be the time for that as well. I did meet with a couple of the council members today, and we had a good discussion. And one of the things that I, from the mayor's budget, want to remove, at least for next year, is the addition of staff to the mayor's office. I need to get more information put together. I still think that that would be a good addition to the mayor's office, not only the mayor's office, but the entire city hall. However, we'll remove it for now and look at it maybe in a couple of years from now, if I'm still mayor. So that's the first thing I wanted to announce. Is there anything else in council?
I think just to, first of all, this has been, we've adopted it for proposal, is that correct? Where are we standing in this? I mean, this is-
Tonight is, we're going to pass it on first to reading.
So it was proposed before, we're just-
Right.
Okay.
We're just preparing Form 1.
Okay. I'm just asking, because I'm not sure where I fit into this since I wasn't around when it was-
Okay.
Put the proposal, so.
But you have seen the budget?
Yeah.
You've reviewed it, so I would think you should be able to vote on the ordinance.
We have not voted yet on it.
Yeah, nothing to vote on. So I will just bring up one question, though, and I know, Phyllis, I've asked you a lot about this, and I'm still, still getting my mind around it, but there is, on the tax cap, what the state has told us is considerably higher than, $100,000 higher than last year. Well, what the state told us last year, but it's about $200,000 higher than what was actual. Right? So if we proceed with that number, what the state has given us, but it comes in, which is much more in line with what they have given us, which is $200,000 less, where does that $200,000 get made up?
We would receive it in tax revenue.
So it would come to us in the form of tax revenue, meaning-
Because we went to a max levy.
Okay.
But if we want to reduce that, we can still reduce it. Once all the figures come in, we have 10 days to respond for that. It's called a 1782.
Okay. So you can, you can proceed with the assumption of the max levy, but when the actual assessments come in-
Then we can adjust.
Then you can adjust accordingly, therefore not raising property taxes.
Correct.
Understood.
Yeah, and that was another question, is the comments about our budget being nearly a million dollars more than last year's budget and us raising everyone's property taxes. The understanding that Phyllis has given me is that only a portion of the budget would affect property taxes. And if I'm not mistaken, by reading my budget right, Phyllis, help me out here. It's these two figures here?
Let's without property taxes.
These two figures here, right?
Are with the tax.
Yeah. So the part of the budget that could affect property taxes is up-
Really up here, right here.
This figure here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is only up $394,000 from last year. So out of the nearly million dollar increase in our budget, only $394,836 would come from the items that could affect property taxes.
The other, the majority of it comes from what the state has told us to assume in revenue from tax, well, from income tax revenue.
Right.
So, yes. And so what you're left with has an effect on property taxes, just around $400,000, which is 150 more than last year's assessment, where it actually came in at.
Correct.
And I don't have, I don't have it right here handy, but from 2017 to 2018, I believe that figure was very similar. I mean, it's not, that's not uncommon for us to have that much of an increase from one year to the next.
Yeah, there's a state statute that allows for an incremental increase based on a six-year rolling quotient of, based on income in the county. And so our county has actually got a pretty low income average over that period, so our increase is less than some counties that have a high quote, six-year average. So, and our figure is also based on a lower figure to begin with. What happened in, it was like 2000 or 2001, the state enacted a law that froze everybody at whatever their levy was. At that time, Decatur was about a quarter of a million dollars below its maximum levy, so it was punished by being frugal because it was frozen at that level. Instead, had they been at the max, they would have been frozen at the max. And most communities were already at the max. So then, except for that penalty. And then, since then, what's happened is that that incremental increase that's based on the six-year income average is the percentage that gets multiplied against your prior year maximum levy. So because we got frozen at a lower amount to begin with, the percentage is against a lower figure than what it otherwise been. So every year since, the city has lost revenue because of that. So this is built in by law that we do get some incremental increase, and it's designed to try to offset some of the inflationary pressure that you find with dealing with supplies and equipment. So that's the reason for that.
And this year, it's 3.4% increase. We could go up to-
And there is history to that, because that same thing happened back in 1973 as well, of what Tim just described.
So, that the, it's not, and the other portion of that is income tax revenue, COAT. Those rates are established by the County Income Tax Council. That's comprised of the fiscal bodies of the county, the two cities, and the two towns. And they vote based on their percentage of the population as a whole. So frankly, county council controls that vote, and they're the ones that actually can establish or reduce those type of taxes. But the additional revenue is coming from the fact that more people are employed, they're getting paid more, so there's more income tax revenue that's coming in.
So, yeah, I mean, on that side of it, on the ledge of the lower part, which is income tax related, there's about $640,000 more than last year, but a lot of that is based on what the state is telling us.
Exactly. Comes from the state.
There's two other things, though, in there, like rainy day, that's, those are just our funds, right?
Right.
So it's really not that much, it's a bigger than increase, but-
That rainy day is money we already have.
Right. So it's not really 640,000 more, it's 640 is available to use.
Right.
But on that portion of it, which is income tax supported, you know, obviously, on the, on the property tax side of things, if it doesn't come in as assessed, then you have, if you ask for a maximum levy, it has the potential of raising the property tax rate to make sure you have that type of revenue. What about in the lower section? We know that the income tax is set at a certain level based on what you just said, so if, if it doesn't come in as the state has assessed, that's it, right? We're not-
The low portion of this, like the low COAT, that's all income taxes, people that are working are paying for that.
So if it doesn't come in what they say, they suggest, we're not, it's not coming from someplace else. So the only piece that has a potential of raising taxes would be that $400,000 on property tax piece. So I think what you, what you answered my question, though, the, when that actual valuation, that's what makes it a little tough, is that we're voting on this before we know what we're actually going to have.
Mm-hmm.
It's all based on assumptions, which is, yeah, so, but when we do get that final number, we have the ability to go back and say, okay, well, we're going to take a lesser amount so as to not, or could it be adjusted into some other areas that we have more of a need?
Yeah. But what happens then is, if you, if you lower your, and this is something Professor DeBoer, Larry DeBoer from Purdue, talked about years ago when the property tax caps came into effect, you know, it looks like you're going to save money to people, but if you're already at the cap on your property taxes, you don't benefit at all whether we reduce it or not, because you're only going to pay so much to begin with. And what that does then is it diverts money from the city, and it goes into the pockets of other taxing units, because that savings gets dispersed throughout the entire county. So it sounds like you should try to keep it down, but in actuality, you get punished for doing it.
But if every taxing unit-
If every taxing unit decided that they were going to decrease it, then you would see potentially our savings. But that's dependent upon everybody doing it.
Because every taxing unit uses the same philosophy of putting it as high as they can.
So then the question becomes, who do you trust to manage those dollars more? Who's going to be the better steward of those dollars, as opposed to giving them away to somebody else?
Well, the other reason you set it high, too, is because you don't know what the state will do in, they come in and say, no, you don't get that much. Well, if you already sort of lower, then they can bring you down even further. So that's why you, as Phyllis has very well-
Proposed.
Done here, proposed, you want to do the maximum levy, and then the LG Local Government Finance have their final say.
And then also, this is calculated on 80% of this year's assessment, so that's going to make the tax rate go up. So if it does go down, we're covering ourselves for that revenue.
And the other, the other thing you have to understand is, assessed value and tax rate are like a seesaw. If your assessed value overall goes up, your tax rate goes down. If your assessed value goes down, your tax rate goes up. So, you know, the best scenario is that we have a lot of growth in the community, and our assessed value overall has increased, that will help keep tax rates down. So everything that you see around here, the improvements that are going on in the community potentially can benefit us long-term by keeping tax rates down, because the assessed value overall has gone up.
So keep investing in Decatur. Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I remember back, and Tim, I didn't explain this better than I can, but I was on the Board of Works and was part of the council back when the 1% tax cap went into play, and our revenue was so terrible, and we worked with stewards prior to that because we didn't keep the levy as high as we could.
Yep.
And we were saving with like $800,000 in a rainy day fund or in our fund, which was very low, because we had to work around and come up with other ways to get revenue to run our city, because we didn't have enough money to run it. And, and the state did that to us, they threw a 1% tax cap on, and really, and Wiley can understand that, too, because it hurt the school system terribly. And it kind of, like them finding out, I think the higher you keep your assessed, I mean, your revenue stream, the better off you are.
First year, just so, so you understand the disparity that that had in terms of effect, is the city lost about $300,000 or $400,000 in tax revenue the first year the tax caps went into effect. I think North Adams lost nearly a million.
Yeah, yeah, it was eight in the million.
And you go down to Monroe and Adam Central, and they lost $1,000 each.
Yeah.
$1,000.
And it's because the three areas where the tax caps hit were high-priced homes, were apartments, and were commercial properties. So you had the highest concentration of those three properties in the city of Decatur. So the city and North Adams took the biggest hit. You go down to Monroe, and you look at how many apartments, how many large homes, what businesses benefited from the tax caps, I think there was one business, there were no apartments, no homes. So it had a huge impact, depending on where you were and what properties were in your community.
Good point. Other comments, anything that, from the public or council members?
In the earlier conversation we had today, we were, took, looked to consider outsourcing janitorial services for 2019, just another opportunity if it could save us any economic dollars in the future.
Yeah, and I think what we discussed there was, I think the budget last year, if I look it up here, was 19-something, and the proposed for next year, because we may be moving upstairs, was up in the $27,000 range as a proposal. Were we wanting to-
I would like, I would like to reduce that back down to what it was and look at outsourcing. Talked to a couple companies, and the hourly rate seemed to be a little bit cheaper than what we're getting now. I just, I think maybe something this could be piggyback on to, these, this person could also take care of Madison Street Plaza Restrooms, come down here for a couple hours a week. So I, I feel comfortable that we could probably get it done within the last year's budget number. Not saying that we need to use it all, but I would leave it in there.
I would agree with Tyler's statement.
So you want to leave the janitorial budget, where's that in here? Help me out, Phyllis. It's right after fire.
Oh, this is a different front out.
That's a different moment. Look at this one here, then. This one.
Right, maybe.
Okay, but that doesn't show what it was.
Oh, okay. Do you need that one?
Oh, here it is.
The budget in 2018 this year was $19,500 for janitorial services, and proposed budget was 27.5. So Tyler, you're saying you want to keep it at 19.5, or you want to take the 19.5 with 3% increase, or?
I'd like to just keep it at the 19.5, would be my motion.
The motion, janitorial services for the 2019 budget would be $19,500.
I'll second that.
I have a second on that.
Mayor, I think I should need to recuse myself from that at all.
Okay.
Just due to personal connections to the janitorial staff.
Can we do that, Tim, when we're giving a 3% pay raise? Well, I guess, we would, this would not be a city employee in that situation.
I think what my motion is, is to kind of get away from being a city employee to a subcontracted position.
Okay. So then we could do that.
On an hourly basis, is what I would like to do in the new year, not to exceed, not to exceed $19,500.
Changing nothing between now and years in, this would be for next year's budget.
So they're not a city employee any longer, because that makes a big difference if they're not, so you know that.
Yes.
They're not a city employee.
That's my motion.
And that's what I second.
You have a motion and a second to remove the janitors' fees from-
Of revenue from salaries into professional services.
Okay. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And make a note that Matt recused himself. More comments on the budget? While we're still in a public hearing, anything from the public? See a few people here from the public? You had them for some reason. Okay. Anything else from council? If not, I would look for-
I, I got them.
Okay, Eric.
I have a question. I've never been to one of these before, so.
Well, you're not going to be shot or anything, it's okay.
I just have a question. I've just been reading, you know, the stuff going around with the Hannah Nutman ordeal. I'm either for or against it, I'll say that straight off of that. I have no children, that's why I don't have any to play. I was just wondering, with moving funds around, like the half million dollars, that's the number that caught my attention, if that affects, I thought moving the business and residents here in the town district, how that affects.
What we've been doing is each year, setting aside $250,000 to go toward that.
Okay.
Okay? It's not like we're adding $500,000 to the 2019 budget.
Right.
We're just setting aside funds. The whole Hannah Nutman project was, we had Miller Land Survey, who's a surveyor and also engineering firm, give us a engineer's estimate on what it would cost to build that park. He put together a spreadsheet, talked to some outside vendors, if you will, primarily an excavation firm, local excavation firm, without mentioning names, and put an approximate cost on what it would cost the city to build that, to tear it out and build it brand-new. With everything being brand spanking new, not only the fields, but the lights, the fences, the bleachers, everything, the estimate was $2.3 million. And if the city wants to continue to set aside $250,000 every year, and you do the math, it's going to take us nine years to raise that money. So it was then with our Greater Decatur Committee, which is a committee that we have that Mayor Schultz formed back in, somebody help me, 2013, maybe?
2010.
2010, okay.
Or '11.
And it was from that committee that helped Decatur apply for the stellar grant, that we started a capital campaign, okay? And with that capital campaign, a lot of the funds was, were raised to build the plaza. The last $100,000 of the plaza, we raised through another crowdfunding effort called Patronicity.
Right.
And actually, it was a 50-50 match up to 50,000, and we went crazy, and we get raised 72,000 from locals, that was great. So most of the plaza was paid for through donated funds and not budgeted funds. Hannah Nutman is a project that Tyler and Craig and I were talking today, and Tyler can see the benefits, because he has kids of that age group, he goes out there and he sees what the parking is like, he sees the fact that North Adams Baseball, which is our Little League organization, didn't even play there this year because of the condition of it, and they moved out to Monmouth, where the reason they, one of the big reasons they moved out there was because there is a concession stand with three fields around it, and they felt that with the concession stand with the three fields around it, they could probably triple their concession sales, which the profits from their concession sales helps fund their league. And they did. They had a great, a great season out there. But is Monmouth where we want the Little League? You know, is that the, the perfect place for Little League? We don't own those parks, those are county parks. What parking is there, we don't own any of it. That's owned by the school that's out there. And then all the grassy area where cars were parked, this year, the school, who also owns all that grassy area, was kind enough to let us park in that grassy area. So long-term, Monmouth is not our answer. So in one way, shape, or form, Hannah Nutman needs attention. Ruben Field, the old, the main Little League field, will be 50 years old next year, 2019. So the Greater Decatur Committee decided to bring to council the idea of completely renovating Hannah Nutman Park. And I think it's a great plan, I think most of the department heads think it's a great plan, I think the council members, I think they're all on board with this, they voted for it. What's your question? I guess I rambled a long time, never really said anything.
So would, would those be contracted out to-
How would it be built?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, back to that. If we put that project out to bid, the lowest-
Responsive and responsible bidder-
I never say that.
-who's awarded the contract.
Would be the award of the contract. And then that person would serve as, that, that firm would serve as the general contractor. He would then in turn hire an electrician to do the lighting, plumber to do the plumbing, carpenter to do the framing and building, concrete personnel to do the concrete. It does not give the city any way of getting any donated services from those entities. So Jeremy and I and Don have talked quite a bit. Don has a lot of, a lot of experience in building ballparks. Don worked on building the Tin Cap Stadium on the excavating site. Don helped build the Monroe Parks. And Don is willing to serve as our, if you will, general contractor. However, if Don does that, then we have to put out several bids, one for a plumber, one for electrician, one for concrete work, one for excavation. However, then, by doing- However, then, by doing it that way, uh, hopefully we'll keep the labor force local. And hopefully whoever the lowest and most responsible, responsible bidder is, would also work with us in a way that we might be able to, uh, have them give back some of their services in kind, if that makes sense. And am I saying anything out of line here?
No. Basically, I think what would happen at that point is if somebody wanted to help the city by keeping costs down, that their bid would be lower than it would normally be and potentially would be awarded the contract because they're the lowest bidder.
I respect. So Eric, back to like 2010, city had a comprehensive plan that was put together, right? That was community organization, community development, I bet it came together and it came up as a plan. It was different areas to be focused on. And one of them, I believe, was Hannah Nutman. Is it, is it also in the park's long range plan? The Hannah Nutman Park was in the park board's long range plan. So it was definitely a project that was identified early on. Greater Decatur Group was brought together to come up with a strategy, how do we implement this comprehensive plan? And the focus at that time was on the downtown because of the stellar initiative and all that type of stuff. And that, at that time, they said, okay, if we don't get these, these grants through the state, we're just going to go out and we'll have to do it individual, right? We'll put it together. In 2015, as a result of that, so two bids at stellar didn't come through, still committed to working on individual projects. And we said at council, we had passed a resolution in 2015 to apply, in essence, five hundred thousand dollars a year, two point five million over five years towards capital improvement projects. And so where does that come from? Well, it comes from money that's already in the budget, right? It comes from human cap development, it comes from CCI, I think it comes from, uh, CDIT, occasionally Rainy Day or Riverboat. So we have those that are already in the budget and that's where that, in essence, five hundred thousand a year came from. And it, and the commitment was that we're gonna, even if it takes us longer, we're gonna see these, these projects through. And I would say that for the most part, the downtown projects, we still have some, perhaps some streetscape things, but those are all in process or, or, you know-
Checking them off.
Checking them off as they come. And so it was, okay, let's shift from the comprehensive plan back to that, away from the downtown to one of those other concentrated areas, which is where Hannah Nutman came up. Because it wasn't the park's long range plan and the comprehensive plan. But I think to your, your question, okay, if, if the city says, hey, if we don't get the, we're gonna do this, right? Where's the money coming from? The same sources that we've been using to knock off these other projects, it just may take a longer-
A lot longer.
Period of time.
So now, and hopefully, in essence, it's not going to cost two point three million. That was the engineer's estimate, but hopefully by bidding it out a different way, we're going to be able to do it for a lot less than that. Also, Don and Jeremy and I have said, and we've talked about different parts of that project that our city employees can do. You know, the demolition work, I think, was thirty thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken. We can do that. We can demo it. Don likes to knock stuff down. Uh, a lot of the fence, we think, can be repurposed. There's bleachers at all six fields that are in okay shape with the exception of Ruben Field, and we think we can repurpose them. So I mean, there's a lot of things out there that can be repurposed. It's not going to cost us two point three million dollars. If I have, if I see one problem with the Hannah Nutman project right now today, it's the lack of the sense of urgency. Donations are coming in. This week's been a really good week. Um, we've, we've had some former athletes at Belmont that have challenged other athletes and it's really been great. We've been getting two hundred fifty dollars here and five hundred dollars here and a thousand dollars here this past week. It's, it's great, but it takes a lot of those to make a million dollars. In addition, we're, we're making, uh, arrangements with the large corporations, we've already talked to a few, we got a long list to go yet, uh, for their support. And I think we'll get there, but if, the, the problem we have is the lack of sense of urgency. I think a lot of the people in Decatur that feel this is a good project, I, I've talked to tons of people, they, oh, we're gonna get, they're gonna get, but they haven't yet. Because this is a one-year-long project, they feel that, no urgency. I can wait. So if there is anything I would like to evolve this, Eric, if there's anything I can get in the paper, it would be that there is a sense of urgency. Uh, and that, and that is just the fact that it shows that you are in favor of the project. If you're in favor of the project, you know, I encourage people to, to make their, make a donation, you know, get into it. Um, if, if a person qualifies for a tax write-off when they're, in their taxes, they can, this is all tax deductible, they can give part of it this year, part of it next year, and get the tax write-off this year and next. And I think I've said enough. I'd be glad to talk to you anytime you want to talk about it, Eric, if you have any other questions, so. Okay, where are we? We're still in the public hearing. Any other comments on the budget? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second, sir.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to reconvene our council meeting.
Take it. Have a motion and a second to reconvene our city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Okay, thank you. So the next thing then would be to introduce our budget on an ordinance, and I think Phyllis has a short ordinance here that's titled as-
Very short.
Ordinance 2018 dash nineteen. And with those things that we've removed, that, that won't be reflective of this, but we can still approve this ordinance on, we want to do two readings this evening, I believe?
Yes. The adoption has to be next meeting.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018 dash nineteen on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim?
Ordinance number 2018 dash nineteen, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2018 dash nineteen on its first reading. Phyllis, with a roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulonkamp?
Yes.
Wally Sear.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2018 dash nineteen in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim?
Ordinance number 2018 dash nineteen, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates.
Make a motion to, um, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2018 dash nineteen in its second reading. Would have roll call vote?
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulonkamp?
Yes.
Wally Sear.
Yes.
The change is not having Murray here.
Right.
I'll make the motion to table ordinance twenty eighteen dash nineteen for its third reading for the September eighteenth city council meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2018 dash nineteen for its third reading at our, what'd you say that was, Wally?
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth meeting for third and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on. We briefly discussed, uh, at our Board of Works meeting, the home located at the corner of First and Monroe Street behind City Hall. Uh, that home was owned by a gentleman named Micah McWilliams that lived in Santa Barbara, California. He'd been running it out. Um, we came to terms on, to purchase that home here a couple of months ago. Um, we set a closing date. Uh, he gave orders to all the tenants to evict, and this past Friday, we had closing on that house. So that house now belongs to the city of Decatur. Um, as we discussed in the Board of Works meeting, when we purchased the Schaefer building, we experienced quite a bit of vandalism with people breaking in and just up to no good in there. Uh, and that building was not an easy building to get in, yet vandals found a way to get in there. Uh, this house has at least six doors to get in and out of it, has several low-level windows. And, uh, because of that reason, uh, I want to bring before council the, the idea of demolition of that home as soon as possible. And we discussed that at the Board of Works meeting. The Board of Works passed a motion to recommend the same to council. And so if there's any discussion on the home on First Street, I believe that that home, we, we discussed this in the meeting, also our own employees, Don and Jeremy's crews would do the demo work and haul away the debris. So is there any discussion on the home?
Unfortunately, it's in great disrepair and needs to come down, so I'd make a motion to do so as soon as possible.
The, during the Board of Works meeting, Don shared with us a lot of photos of the place. And if you want to throw them up there, you can, Don. Yeah, it's, not only looks bad, but today, Don and Jeremy and a few others in the building, and it's very infested with not so good things. Don, I'll just throw up some pictures here.
I think too, it's good to refresh as far as thinking that property, city wanting that property and purchased that property for future investment at Riverfront and wanting to be able to have control of that property, uh, for those future decisions.
Don, do you have a rough estimate of how much that will cost?
Take what our, take what the biggest house was on the park, you'd add a little bit to it.
Twenty-five hundred? Twenty-five hundred. And disposal, that land will be disposal. We've got thirty-one.
Yeah.
And land will be disposal. We will grind the brick and the concrete. Twenty-five hundred.
Much less than if we hired it out.
You second this motion?
No.
Like Eric, we're adding the concrete, several recycled, we're buying it still.
Okay, so I think Matt made a motion for us to proceed with the demo as soon as possible. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second that we move forward with demolition of the house behind us here as soon as possible. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Don, or not Tom, Kurt, is there any left when you're on the safety voting count?
Of course. Pop yourself. That's what I was hoping for. That's where it should come from.
Thank you, council. It's been passed. Uh, next thing on the agenda, and actually the last thing on the agenda, two meetings ago, Melissa presented some rules and regulations for the, the plaza. And the long, long story short of that was that nothing was really decided. We talked about a lot of things that we would like to do, but there was no firm action taken on exactly what we wanted to do. Now, Melissa, you did, with some of the things that was discussed that night, you updated the, what you, do you have copies of that for everyone? Some of the things that we actually discussed that night, like the hours of the, of the parking, no pets, no smoking, other things that was under the miscellaneous section. Um, I got one. Now, in, in that August seventh meeting, we discussed a fee that people would pay to use the plaza, and then we, we got into the topic of quality of life functions that take place at the plaza. And, uh, I'd have to say that thus far, there's been a lot of really good quality of life projects taking place down there. It's been drawing really good crowds and a lot of interaction involved with the general public and even, even people from out of town that come in here on Thursday evenings or for German Fest or other functions. But the question I have is define a quality of life event, okay? I think most of what Main Street and the Chamber has been putting on at the plaza have been quality of life events. But other people may put on events at that plaza that you could say are quality of life events. We have the sculpture tour. They, they used it this year. That's not a Chamber or a Main Street event, but yet I think it's a quality of life function. So do we charge them? I mean, how do we draw a line as to what a quality of life event is? Let's say PAWS wants to have some kind of a function down there for pet parade or whatever. Um, is that a quality of life event? I mean, where do we draw the line on who pays and then, and what they pay?
I think if it's an open to the public event, it's a quality of life. And it still comes before us for an approval standpoint, because I definitely have heard some feedback on this.
Yeah, we all have.
Should we charge? Who should we charge? Um, and as to not try to make money on the plaza, but have it open for use to all. So I think the things you mentioned are quality of life things.
Yeah, I think the rules and regulations, you know, as far as them having a felony event form to tell us what they're going to do while they're there, and a list of rules of what's expected from them, ask for cleaning it up when they're done, I, what to do with the trash, et cetera. And maybe some kind of a minimal fee for the cleaning of the restrooms if-
I think the difference is if it's, you use as a discussion point, a wedding reception, which is a private event. Now, I think there needs to be a fee structure there, but at a minimal. What is our cost? Because that's one thing I definitely heard from people that have given to the plaza.
Yep.
They want it used.
Mm-hmm.
I want to say free, but we have cost.
I think we've all heard those sort of kind of comments, Matt. I'm in total agreement with you. Um, do we know how much the electrical's been on the average? We've been basically using the plaza since about June, since it was finished up. Do you know what we're being charged for the electrical on a monthly basis so far?
Not yet. No.
And then our sewer and water, Kevin, you have any idea? Could you put something together for us?
I think that was a hundred and twenty bucks.
Per month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty.
I just wonder. I'm, I think it's good information to know. Now, not all events are going to be that way, but we can kind of guess on the amount of people that we had during that time, right?
Well, part of the structure could be too. What areas of the facilities do you want to use? Uh, you know, if it's just going to be the open area and you're not planning on using the restrooms-
Or electricity.
For electricity. Uh, but maybe, you know, restrooms are this amount priced. You know, we do that for, uh, the, the park.
Yep.
You know, Legion Park, uh, and maybe some type of structure like that. Because just like you folks, I've heard the same thing. People feel they've contributed to that in donations, um, and they, they feel like they already have a piece of it. And yet, they definitely want to cover costs such as use of restrooms.
Yes. It's just not to be, it's not to be our big money-making venture.
No.
It's just something that- In the past, with the Chamber and other organizations throughout the Chamber, for example, if you use a courthouse electricity, we ask that you pay twenty-five dollars, okay? On that deal. Now, if we've got several events that month, Kiki Yanga, Car Show, blah, 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 that are doing throughout the month, then we just kind of cut that up and put it towards each one of those organizations.
I mean, it, it makes sense to me where you're saying the idea that, hey, maybe they don't want to use the restrooms, right? So what are we, we're paying for use. And if we know, if we build this into our, our janitorial contract, that one-time servicing of those restrooms is going to cost X amount of dollars, right?
Right.
So then you build that into the contract, because if you want to use, use of that, this is how much it's going to cost. I don't, I don't know that, because that's, how do you get between, you know, private versus nonprofit? I, I think it's just a set fee. And as you pointed out, those organizations are going to have to come before with the-
City council.
City council for that form anyway. And most of the time- And most of the time, these not-for-profits that are having events downtown are going to be asking the city for contributions anyway. So it could be built into the contribution sponsorship that, okay, part of ours, we will waive that fee, right? I just think that might be the easier way to do it, is kind of, I just point out, as needed, but it's a standard cost of doing business.
Right.
And I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing to have a use fee. Yes, I can see the perspective that we want to, we feel like we've already paid for it, but I also see the perspective that we want to be able to preserve our investment.
True.
And maintain it.
And I don't think, the people that were sharing this with me, I don't think they would object to that. They're just concerned with maybe some direction that initially, although our initial conversation was not anything at all in stone, it was just throwing out thinking and starting with that. But, you know, and even a deposit is probably wise. And if everything is fine when you're done, then you, the deposit is returned.
I agree with that.
I'm only concerned, I don't want to throw rats in the thing, but if we're, that process is the, are we going to get thrown in the middle of who we donate or who we let use it for free and who we don't want to use it for free? If we're deciding on a basis when they come in here and say Sculpture Corps comes in and they get it for free, but then the next group comes in, they offer it, but then we decide we don't want to give it to them?
You're danger of psych precedent, right? If you give them one, you almost have to give it to everyone.
Right. I, I'm more along the lines of what Matt said. If it's, if it's a private function that you don't want people from the public coming into, I think they should have one rate and then...
Rather than calling it nonprofit and private event, which is why I'm in here...
In private.
Yeah, you'd have a public event that's open to the public versus a private event, which is a closed event.
And they still need to come and...
Yeah, still have an event form, yeah. I like the event form that we already have, because you have to touch base with all the department heads.
Yeah. I think that's tied in back here. And then they changed, I think, the office has been changed, the police officers, you know, you have to have one on duty, and then you need to consult with the police if you're having more than two hundred. As long as Lenny feels comfortable with making the decision on how many police he thinks need to be at the van.
I think we have to feed it anyway. Yeah. Yeah, I think that Lenny, what he's been doing when we have concerts, which may be anywhere from five hundred to eight hundred or so people.
Nine ninety-nine.
Nine ninety-nine. Not one more. Is it okay to table this, to review this, and kind of go over and make some clear notes? And then maybe make a decision? Absolutely. Is it okay with you guys?
Are you, I'm just, are you suggesting on the public side that there should be no fee, or...
For a public event?
Because that's going to, the majority of it's going to be public event.
I think they should, I think they still need to help with the cleaning of the restrooms, which is minimal.
Right, or if we gotta, if we have a, if we could research and get a basis on, you know, water bill's going to be a hundred dollars a month, if we can cover some of that cost, and if we can get an idea of what the electric costs, then maybe that fee can be put on the public. My fear is, I just don't want to have to decide every time someone comes in front of me. Why did you give it to Sculpture Corps and why not us? We're just getting at that. Yeah.
Well, I think it is a clear distinction, private event, a public event.
Right.
We're trying to encourage use. Instead of giving a lot of use, making it public. We said in a prior meeting, it's kind of growing pains down there, and we're working our way through that, so.
Yeah. Maybe the pub, public events should still have a fee. I think, I think it would be best if we get an average, so that it's not, we're not burdening those public events, but we're still...
We want to encourage them. We don't want to sway...
Maybe it's not covered, because you don't know. Maybe you won't have four events for the month. Maybe it won't cover it that month, but hopefully it covers it the next month. Hopefully we're not going way upside down on it, but don't... Why do you water bill have to high? We have two thousand people a month, and we pay sixty dollars or less every month for water.
That was probably for watering too, using the restrooms and watering.
Oh, well, that's fine. I'm just like, keep your grip with it. We have a lot of people frequenting the restroom several times while they're...
We pay when they flush it, so. You don't have a grip to...
I wasn't going to say it that way, but that's a fact. Good. It's great. We're going to table this and... I think it'd be a great idea, now that we've seen this, let's just go through and take a look at it and bring it back up. If that's fine with you guys. Fine by me. Thank you, Melissa, for putting that together.
Is that a motion for it?
Yeah, a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to table the Madison Street Plaza rules and regulations for everyone to review. And while, in that same motion, could I get a time period as to when you want to continue the conversation? Yeah, September 18th, the next meeting. Okay. That be okay? Table till the next meeting. A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Phil, can you find out the electric bill? Do you want to discuss them on?
Yeah, the electric, water, what else we got? What about, is there, the queenie cost? How much, what's the average? Who does it? I know Mary's done it, I know Sue Melholland's done it, or had some kids do it during the summertime. Can we find out, Jeremy?
Two hours.
Okay. A week or?
Two hours in an event?
Normally it's about two hours.
Just give us an idea.
Two hours per event. Do you factor in?
Just give us some kind of number.
Supplies and...
Thank you, and supplies?
We're paying for supplies.
Right now, Parking Rack is paying for the supplies, and then I put it in common council's budget for next year. Same for the electric and the water.
And that came from the one motion that was made, that City Council helped cover some of the expenses.
So if we get it in average, and then that money, all right, so we'll just go back in the common council's budget and all set.
So we have a motion and a second on the table.
Probably going to have to do an ordinance that establishes that it goes into the general fund. You're going to establish a fee to charge for use, so you have to do that by an ordinance.
You have to have a public hearing.
What?
You have to have a public hearing.
No.
After you advertise it.
We're not a public...
Sorry. You do have to post it on the table.
You have to publish it, but you don't have to have a public hearing.
Okay, all in favor of that motion? Signify with a aye. Opposed? Thank you. So I encourage all of you, as well, I think, I encourage all of you to please review this. If you have questions, feel free to contact me, Melissa, or each other for that matter. And then when we come back in here on the 18th, let's spend some time discussing this again. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Going back to the budget, Melissa's over here scrambling, and she remembered that there was something that...
Yeah, there's something in the budget. When I worked the Parking Rack budget, the revenues that are coming in, that I'm anticipating to come in, were a little shy of what the budget was, so I would like to get council's approval. Legion Park has restrooms that need to be repaired.
Rebuilt.
Yeah, rebuilt. It's, he's got thirty thousand in there. If I could just remove half of that, pay half from Riverboat for this year. And then he also needs to replace the roof at Riverside Center, that's forty thousand. And I'd like to pay forty thousand for the roof and take that out of Parking Rack. Since they are city-owned buildings, I think it'd be okay for the city to pay for those. And then I also removed the used truck, so he does have, I mean...
You removed it, but you moved it somewhere else, no?
Not on the used truck, no, that's completely out. Unless you guys want it somewhere else.
So what did you do on the roof?
The roof is going to be paid out of Riverboat.
Okay.
This year.
Not Parking Rack.
Correct. Same for half of the park, or the restrooms at Legion Park.
I think the restrooms were actually a sixty thousand initiative, and you're going to pay half of it this year?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Okay. And Jeremy was okay with that, if you guys are okay with that.
And that gives Jeremy a little extra cushion in his...
Do we need a resolution? It's just approving that change. Just, she's talking.
I put that in that way. You guys are okay with that.
Motion to approve, Phyllis is, I'll second. A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Phyllis has worked extremely hard on this budget, and I am very grateful for Phyllis every day, with all the work that her and Wendy and Bobby do.
I think we've added a lot to the parks department with all these houses we've turned out, increased the mowing. Some of their money has always went to the stuff that we've added to them, so taking some money out of our city park to help fix up a roof and restrooms that really need it, I think is a good idea.
Absolutely.
Overdue?
Thank you. Going up to the department heads. Lenny, any comments from you tonight? Jim, how's that arm?
Yeah.
Good. Les? Good to go. Kevin? You hearing from some landlords getting in their paperwork?
Yes, yes, sorry, I'm burning that. And yes, so keep the forms coming.
Has it been pretty positive, Kevin?
Yes.
Good.
On board now. My phone calls, trying to make sure that... Call them.
Kurt? Don? I think Don has a little report tonight.
Some of our other communities have been posted what has been going on with infrastructure. So we've kind of got a slideshow going, and a paper here for council says what we've done in the last four weeks with our city crews, with the help of Jeremy's guys.
I have one.
So many times I hear from the public, you know, we're doing any for infrastructure. But in the last four weeks, we did six hundred feet of twelve-inch sewers to homestead, replaced two inlets on Central Avenue where we stood a stormy pipe, installed eight-inch waterman on Second Street during the night, so we didn't affect many of the businesses. That went from the alley to Madison Street, which it's now been tested on. Replaced water services on Stevenson Street, installed a hundred and eighty feet of eight-inch storm sewer, two hundred and twenty feet of six-inch storm sewer, six-yard drains, two inlets in the alley between Line and Shermyer. Removed about thirty acres of field tile runoff that was going in the sanitary sewer from Ed's cages property. So one of the major things I've been looking for that I found, we got out of it. That's what we did in the last four weeks. We need to picture the county.
Well, you also repaired a water line in the intersection of Pickway and...
Yeah, that's not counting all the water lines.
Yeah, that's a daily thing.
Projects that were done.
But those are important, too.
They are important, and that's done every day. But this is just what happens with your city crews, so.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Don. Jeremy, you want to add anything to that?
There's a lot of things going on. It takes a long time to trace somebody's property inside. Like Don was saying, that acreage, water, and all the cage property, you know, seeing that handle on your eye and eye issues, as we had discussed earlier, the road works needing a tank and such. Things are going pretty well. We're getting a lot of little things taken care of that we've talked about the last few But, you know, learn that, so things are going pretty well. Any trash is next week? So if you have anything to put out, please get it out. One more pickup day. Yard waste will continue for about another six weeks. If you have a Friday or a night that you've been waiting long, cooler temperatures, you know, you're trimming down, please get it out within the next six weeks. It's hard to believe in six weeks, we'll probably look and we'll see. So that is the, we are releasing a collection once the heat starts coming down.
Bill, you have anything? Either one of you, Bills?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Carbot?
I can reflect on heavy trash pickup. I want to get out to the public. If something's in your yard that you haven't touched or moved in a year...
It might just be trash.
It might just be heavy trash. Just take it out of the heavy trash. Clean your yard, though. Thank you.
Well said, Bill. Thank you. Melissa? Oh, Ann's back there. You're hiding. Ann? Nothing for Ann. Okay, anything from the general public this evening?
Yeah, what about the automobile set on average week? How did that turn?
Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, we're moving cars pretty much daily, and the public is really cooperating, which makes it nice. Do you like to stop and talk to them? Like Friday, there was a vehicle down here that, on, what, Texas or Jefferson? And the lady came out and said, "Am I going to get cited? Do I have to pay a fine?" I said, "No, we'd just like to have you move your vehicle so we can sweep there." And once we get, like Donnie was saying, once we get our schedule lined up, and we can actually let the people know what day we're coming through, I think that'll help also. But yeah, the public is really cooperating. So thank you for...
Yeah, we move cars down the curbs and sweep under where the car was.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do. Because some of them aren't actually parked over the drains, and we haven't been able to touch them for a while. So, yeah, that's kind of a project. We have no ordinance that prohibits people from parking out the street for extended time as long as they have plates and as long as their cars are operable. But some people have parked there for a long time, and we haven't been able to sweep. And that's when Joe usually lets me know if I can work on those people and get the car to move, if they just move it a few feet so we can...
Well, if they do the movement, you don't call a wrecker to do it.
No, 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 no.
That's how you did it, okay.
Al, you got a question?
Animal control, railroad crossing.
Jeremy, you want to go first on railroad crossings?
On the railroad crossings, we've been working on scheduling and coordinating those repairs. They also met at the railroad. The railroad wants to do some more structural work under the crossings. So being that, really, right now, none of the two really have the money appropriated to do the structural work, so the three of us are just in agreement that we're going to purchase some pot mix, actually, and the best we can for now being that it's this late into the year, and, you know, you're looking at harvest here, probably couldn't have three weeks, and then actually set down and come up with a good solid plan along the railroad and also bring a truck, get a plan in place after harvest and then resurface. More than likely, that motion won't happen until early 19.
Okay. And on the animal control, I shared a little bit at the last meeting about Bluffton. Bluffton Wells County, they have an animal, a true animal shelter. The cost of their animal shelter is shared fifty-fifty between Bluffton and the county, and it covers the entire county. So if they go to Ossian, Ossian's paying for it, I guess through the county side of things, but Bluffton's paying more than their fair share. It's staffed with three full-time employees. The facility has forty-two cages for cats, twenty-three runs for dogs. The average inventory there is anywhere from twenty to thirty cats on a daily basis, approximately ten dogs. I contacted the county, talked to Adams County officials. Right now, we utilize the services of Chad and Jenny Sprunger to bring the animals in as the animal catcher, okay? If you call the Sprungers to come get a cat, they want, they want the homeowner that's being bothered by that cat to actually contain the cat, because chances are, the way cats are, if it's not contained, by the time they get there, it's going to be gone. So more times than not, when possible, they ask that the animal be contained one way or another before they'll come get it. The county then uses Charlie Bowers to house any animals that's brought in as the Adams County Animal Shelter, I believe is what they're actually calling it. When I contacted the commissioners, they said that with the not-for-profit entities of PAWS and Lennox Legacy Animal Rescue, far fewer dogs and cats are being brought in by the Sprungers and housed out at the, at the animal shelter. So kudos to both... So kudos to both Paws and Lennox Animal Rescue, because they're truly doing a, a good service to our community. Adams County Animal Control is funded one hundred percent by the county, and they cover the entire county. So they're not hitting the city of Decatur or Burn-up for anything, they're paying for all that the county is.
But they take care of the city stuff, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they cover the entire county, cities and...
If you have a problem, you need to call them.
No, if you have a problem with an animal, you call Chad Springer, okay? Actually, I believe you can call the county dispatch, and they can contact the Sprungers if you don't have it. If you need a phone number, let me know, I can get it for you. It's on the county webpage. Commissioners believe that we have a good system, and that it works, and it's not costly to taxpayers, and they are not inclined to change things. And if you want to talk to the county commissioners, or three of them, I encourage you to confront them and talk to them about it. Could the city do something without the aid of the county or the other municipalities? I can't see it. I can't see, you know, it's tough for us to bring on one new staff member. They take, I talked to the animal shelter over there, and they have three full-time employees, and they said that they need more help, that trying to take care of twenty to thirty cats and ten dogs daily, keep all the cages and pens cleaned, and keeping them...
Room care?
Yeah, it's in Bluffton, is, is more than what three people can do. So right now, I don't see it as being an affordable option for Decatur, and not, not without the county's input on it, I sure don't. So that's the report I wrote down to give you, Al. Any other questions, Al? Mary? Connor, you're here this evening. How's it going with the, the dog park work?
All right, so I've got, I've got files, I've got pictures of signage from all of the surrounding parks, in terms of like their rules and regulations. We've got big work from Foster Park, Forebrain Parks Department, and how they run their things up there. We've got an estimate from H&amp;H Fencing, they estimated a hundred, a hundred foot of fence to be twenty-one thousand dollars, which I, I felt was hefty, considering the other estimate I got from a local, couple of local contractors that were eight thousand and ten thousand dollars for the same. The quality of work from H&amp;H, I believe, would be something that we'd rather deal with in the first place than some local smojos that want to, they want to also contribute labor costs, that's part of why they're bid was so low. So I guess, I just need to put together a nice little package for you guys to see, maybe coming up on the eighteenth. Jeremy has suggested maybe coming to the Parks Board meeting on the tenth.
Cut.
To discuss things like location and stuff like that. I guess my question would be, how do I go about suggesting locations for, for approval? Second, how far is the city willing to go to pay for this? And third, how far do I need to try and start fundraisers, doing building walks, doing t-shirts, whatever?
My, my suggestion, Connor, would be, one, try to get an idea of costs. Two, I would be much more inclined with it coming from the Parks Department. Parks Department wants this and where they want it, and from that park board. Then I think we can make a better informed decision.
So, which is perfect, because that comes before the next council meeting, anyway. So, and that's, you know, I'm kind of a stalemate until we can have an meeting, anyway.
I found your Facebook page, and then I inquired, I said, oh, okay, who's writing this? You answered me, and I had a little back and forth with you, and, you know, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to get some people to, to support, support it. Yeah, it's, it's not rocket science to make a dog park, you know?
Correct, yeah.
I want to say thanks, Connor.
Correct.
Because you put your money where your mouth was, I really appreciate that, man. Yeah, yeah, so. Taking the time and doing it. Yep.
Thank you for coming and challenging me to do so. I'm probably a little involved in these...
Question for you. Do we have dog retrieving sticks to where you can capture them with the police department?
We do have mooses.
Or a stick?
If you pick one up today that was non-aggressive, and it was later returned, so, like I said, we had one isolated incident that was, kind of put a stain on us, but we do more good than bad.
Oh, I agree. I just wondered if you had that stick with a, with a noose on it?
We do, and, and we do get those dogs. Look at our Twitter and Facebook.
Okay.
If we need, now people share this information, and we actually see Chad and Jennifer a little bit of time by helping them out, too.
Yeah, yeah. If it's a non-aggressive dog, it's not that big a deal to bring it in. Cats, on the other hand, are just still...
Let me lose that phone.
Uh, what's the word? You can get away, quick. Elusive, elusive, that's the word, yeah. Corey, did you have anything else tonight? You're the last of the public here, so. If not, anything from council members?
Just wanted to say it's good to be back, because I think there's, it's amazing what all has been accomplished since last year that I've been gone, and I think it's, it's kudos to the city council, to the city workers. Just to name a few, I mean, Mano Street, Dunn, all the side, all the streetscaping along there, riverfront, or the Nature Preserve, Madison Street, movie theater, like, none of this stuff was here when I left. So it's, it's extremely impressive, and of course, there's a lot of things that have been done internally, ordinances, which, I think just shows the amount of work that you all put in.
I will say, though, you did not finish the budget before I got back.
I just know what it was.
Budget, budget.
We wanted, we wanted your insight, and wanted your input.
Hey, man, I took my, I took my return to... That camp, call your wisdom, we wanted in there.
Ken, I wanted to say thank you for having an open mind and open discussion on all these... Yes, I really appreciate that, thank you.
I thank you and Tyler for coming in and having a discussion. Tim, you have anything tonight?
I just wanted to, well, I want to welcome Ken back. It's, it's great to see him back here, especially that he's safe and sound.
Absolutely.
And then, did you have something that needs to be made a matter of record?
Oh, yes.
Yeah?
Thank you. The lawyer that was filed today with the clerk's office stating that, as of...
Official?
Official, yeah. As of twenty-two August, it was no longer active duty, returning on one September, so request that be made a matter of record.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?